This conference will now be recorded.
All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, bills is our next agenda. I've had all my questions answered. Do you want to have any questions? Okay, we entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Brenda, do we have any travel requests?
I have two.
How about personnel?
I have two.
You have the floor.
I'll start with the equalization. Brett was unable to be here due to a schedule conflict, so I will be here first. I have a step raise for Mike Neahan. Equalization for deputy grade two base pay of thirty-two ninety-two, full-time permanent employee effective eleven seventeen of two thousand twenty-four. Yep, and then I have a, this is actually Carmen Simons, is actually a classification change. She has been moved to an aphaser for grade one base pay of twenty-nine fifty-four through the full-time permanent employee. That is affected eleven seventeen twenty-four as well. And then Cassie Ranepah, Brett is requesting to transfer her cell phone per diem to Cassie Ranepah. There's no change to her budget. It is a fifty-dollar a month cell phone per diem.
Most of the approval of the equalization requests.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, bills is our next agenda. I've had all my questions answered. Do you want to have any questions? Okay, we entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Brenda, do we have any travel requests?
I have two.
How about personnel?
I have two.
You have the floor.
I'll start with the equalization. Brett was unable to be here due to a schedule conflict, so I will be here first. I have a step raise for Mike Neahan. Equalization for deputy grade two base pay of thirty-two ninety-two, full-time permanent employee effective eleven seventeen of two thousand twenty-four. Yep, and then I have a, this is actually Carmen Simons, is actually a classification change. She has been moved to an aphaser for grade one base pay of twenty-nine fifty-four through the full-time permanent employee. That is affected eleven seventeen twenty-four as well. And then Cassie Ranepah, Brett is requesting to transfer her cell phone per diem to Cassie Ranepah. There's no change to her budget. It is a fifty-dollar a month cell phone per diem.
Most of the approval of the equalization requests.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, bills is our next agenda. I've had all my questions answered. Do you want to have any questions? Okay, we entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Brenda, do we have any travel requests?
I have two.
How about personnel?
I have two.
You have the floor.
I'll start with the equalization. Brett was unable to be here due to a schedule conflict, so I will be here first. I have a step raise for Mike Neahan. Equalization for deputy grade two base pay of thirty-two ninety-two, full-time permanent employee effective eleven seventeen of two thousand twenty-four. Yep, and then I have a, this is actually Carmen Simons, is actually a classification change. She has been moved to an aphaser for grade one base pay of twenty-nine fifty-four through the full-time permanent employee. That is affected eleven seventeen twenty-four as well. And then Cassie Ranepah, Brett is requesting to transfer her cell phone per diem to Cassie Ranepah. There's no change to her budget. It is a fifty-dollar a month cell phone per diem.
Most of the approval of the equalization requests.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And then registered deeds, Sabida is also here if you have any questions for her. And these are all step raises. Wendy Carr, county employee forty-four, grade two, base pay of twenty-six seventy, full-time permanent employee effective December second. Sherri Royos, county employee three, grade two, base pay of twenty-four ninety-two, full-time permanent, effective December second. And Lisa Kitchmiller, county employee three, grade two, base pay of twenty-four ninety-two, full-time permanent employee, also effective fourteen.
Motion to approve the, all the registered deeds requests.
Second. Okay, we have motion in a second. No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And these are sheriff, uh, personnel requests. Sheriff Dean is here as well if you have any questions for him. Step raise for J.D. Marshall, county correction officer two, grade three, base pay of twenty-five seventy-four, full-time permanent employee effective December first. Classification change for Lamar Anderson, correction officer two, grade two, base pay of twenty-four eighty-four, also affected one. He is full-time permanent employee. Troy Thompson, this is a classification change going to a deputy one, grade one, base pay of twenty-nine thirty, full-time permanent employee, effective eleven twenty-six today. And then a classification change for Julie Rockup, going to a criminal analyst two, grade one, base pay of twenty-eight forty-one, full-time permanent employee. This will be effective January twelfth of twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Motion to approve the sheriff's request. Second. Okay, we have motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, bills is our next agenda. I've had all my questions answered. Do you want to have any questions? Okay, we entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Brenda, do we have any travel requests?
I have two.
How about personnel?
I have two.
You have the floor.
I'll start with the equalization. Brett was unable to be here due to a schedule conflict, so I will be here first. I have a step raise for Mike Neahan. Equalization for deputy grade two base pay of thirty-two ninety-two, full-time permanent employee effective eleven seventeen of two thousand twenty-four. Yep, and then I have a, this is actually Carmen Simons, is actually a classification change. She has been moved to an aphaser for grade one base pay of twenty-nine fifty-four through the full-time permanent employee. That is affected eleven seventeen twenty-four as well. And then Cassie Ranepah, Brett is requesting to transfer her cell phone per diem to Cassie Ranepah. There's no change to her budget. It is a fifty-dollar a month cell phone per diem.
Most of the approval of the equalization requests.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, bills is our next agenda. I've had all my questions answered. Do you want to have any questions? Okay, we entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Brenda, do we have any travel requests?
I have two.
How about personnel?
I have two.
You have the floor.
I'll start with the equalization. Brett was unable to be here due to a schedule conflict, so I will be here first. I have a step raise for Mike Neahan. Equalization for deputy grade two base pay of thirty-two ninety-two, full-time permanent employee effective eleven seventeen of two thousand twenty-four. Yep, and then I have a, this is actually Carmen Simons, is actually a classification change. She has been moved to an aphaser for grade one base pay of twenty-nine fifty-four through the full-time permanent employee. That is affected eleven seventeen twenty-four as well. And then Cassie Ranepah, Brett is requesting to transfer her cell phone per diem to Cassie Ranepah. There's no change to her budget. It is a fifty-dollar a month cell phone per diem.
Most of the approval of the equalization requests.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, bills is our next agenda. I've had all my questions answered. Do you want to have any questions? Okay, we entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, bills is our next agenda. I've had all my questions answered. Do you want to have any questions? Okay, we entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Brenda, do we have any travel requests?
I have two.
How about personnel?
I have two.
You have the floor.
I'll start with the equalization. Brett was unable to be here due to a schedule conflict, so I will be here first. I have a step raise for Mike Neahan. Equalization for deputy grade two base pay of thirty-two ninety-two, full-time permanent employee effective eleven seventeen of two thousand twenty-four. Yep, and then I have a, this is actually Carmen Simons, is actually a classification change. She has been moved to an aphaser for grade one base pay of twenty-nine fifty-four through the full-time permanent employee. That is affected eleven seventeen twenty-four as well. And then Cassie Ranepah, Brett is requesting to transfer her cell phone per diem to Cassie Ranepah. There's no change to her budget. It is a fifty-dollar a month cell phone per diem.
Most of the approval of the equalization requests. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And then registered deeds, Sabida is also here if you have any questions for her. And these are all step raises. Wendy Carr, county employee forty-four, grade two, base pay of twenty-six seventy, full-time permanent employee effective December second. Sherri Royos, county employee three, grade two, base pay of twenty-four ninety-two, full-time permanent, effective December second. And Lisa Kitchmiller, county employee three, grade two, base pay of twenty-four ninety-two, full-time permanent employee, also affected fourteen.
Motion to approve the, all the registered deeds requests.
Second. Okay, we have motion in a second. No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And these are sheriff, uh, personnel requests. Sheriff Dean is here as well if you have any questions for him. Step raise for J.D. Marshall, county correction officer two, grade three, base pay of twenty-five seventy-four, full-time permanent employee effective December first. Classification change for Lamar Anderson, correction officer two, grade two, base pay of twenty-four eighty-four, also affected one. He is full-time permanent employee. Troy Thompson, this is a classification change going to a deputy one, grade one, base pay of twenty-nine thirty, full-time permanent employee, effective eleven twenty-six today. And then a classification change for Julie Rockup, going to a criminal analyst two, grade one, base pay of twenty-eight forty-one, full-time permanent employee. This will be effective January twelfth of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Motion to approve the sheriff's request.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Brenda, do we have any travel requests?
I have two.
How about personnel?
I have two.
You have the floor.
I'll start with the equalization. Brett was unable to be here due to a schedule conflict, so I will be here first. I have a step raise for Mike Neahan. Equalization for deputy grade two base pay of thirty-two ninety-two, full-time permanent employee effective eleven seventeen of two thousand twenty-four. Yep, and then I have a, this is actually Carmen Simons, is actually a classification change. She has been moved to an aphaser for grade one base pay of twenty-nine fifty-four through the full-time permanent employee. That is affected eleven seventeen twenty-four as well. And then Cassie Ranepah, Brett is requesting to transfer her cell phone per diem to Cassie Ranepah. There's no change to her budget. It is a fifty-dollar a month cell phone per diem.
Most of the approval of the equalization requests.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, bills is our next agenda. I've had all my questions answered. Do you want to have any questions? Okay, we entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And then registered deeds, Sabida is also here if you have any questions for her. And these are all step raises. Wendy Carr, county employee forty-four, grade two, base pay of twenty-six seventy, full-time permanent employee effective December second. Sherri Royos, county employee three, grade two, base pay of twenty-four ninety-two, full-time permanent, effective December second. And Lisa Kitchmiller, county employee three, grade two, base pay of twenty-four ninety-two, full-time permanent employee, also affected fourteen.
Motion to approve the, all the registered deeds requests.
Second. Okay, we have motion in a second. No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And these are sheriff, uh, personnel requests. Sheriff Dean is here as well if you have any questions for him. Step raise for J.D. Marshall, county correction officer two, grade three, base pay of twenty-five seventy-four, full-time permanent employee effective December first. Classification change for Lamar Anderson, correction officer two, grade two, base pay of twenty-four eighty-four, also affected one. He is full-time permanent employee. Troy Thompson, this is a classification change going to a deputy one, grade one, base pay of twenty-nine thirty, full-time permanent employee, effective eleven twenty-six today. And then a classification change for Julie Rockup, going to a criminal analyst two, grade one, base pay of twenty-eight forty-one, full-time permanent employee. This will be effective January twelfth of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Motion to approve the sheriff's request.
Second. Okay, we have motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman, that's all I have for questions.
Okay, the state health nurse agreement, Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, for consideration, it's a twenty twenty-five state health nurse agreement. I compared it with last year's agreement. Although some of the language has changed, I don't think it has anything substantive. Importantly, I think the amount of the agreement remains exactly the same as it was last year, fifty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. Looking for motion to authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have motion in a second for approval for the chairman's signature. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll have you sign one hard copy just so we have one for the last.
Here.
Thank you.
All right.
We got one next?
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-two, resolution for canceled checks.
Chairman, I'm just requesting a motion to, uh, sign the resolution for the canceled checks for twenty twenty-three. They have all been, they're a hundred and eighty days or ninety days according to what check, checking account it is. The totaling a hundred and ten checks adding the amount of two thousand seven six, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents.
I move to approve resolution twenty-four dash forty-two and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
And additional opioid settlement funds.
Um, I received a request to, an application for, this is more funding for the opioid settlement. Um, we do have some folks that are coming in on December seventeenth to also request funds. So I just, I just want to know if you want me to apply for this or wait and see. Right now we have a hundred and thirty thousand forty-two dollars and eighty cents on opioid funds and we look at them until twenty thirty-eight.
Wow.
So I don't know if you want me to, um, I kind of asked about it, um, to see, you know, what it is, if it's something that's going to be, you know, another, because I think it was an eighteen-year settlement. So they said this would be like, it's when they had a big project that they were looking at, um, that this might be possibly something that you could use that for, so.
Going to bank them?
Yeah, you, you just keep it. It doesn't say.
We'll wait.
Yeah, we can, like I said, we can wait and see, um, you know, what we need to group. There's two different people coming in on the seventeenth to discuss this and I guess we could decide at that time, um, if we want to proceed, but.
You need a motion of?
I don't. I just letting you know that it's out there.
Okay.
Just FYI.
All right, Sheriff Dean.
Good morning.
We have a resolution. Twenty-four dash forty-three.
We just got, yeah.
Is that what that was? About forty-two.
Forty-three.
Go ahead, sir.
Our Public Safety and Services Center is progressing very well. It's just here on Ben Dais Island, looking for, filing those descriptions. The White Hills are up on the side as they're starting more and more like a building that's soon to be occupied. Our furniture is all in, that furniture that we received free from the state, that's all been moved in. And that's also, the final touches are being put on that. Dispatch course was moved up somewhere three weeks ago. Functioning very well. There's a few nuances that we're still handling down there, but they're not a real concern. And otherwise, we're marching forward, so nothing else to report. I must be having myself.
Oh. Thank you.
All right. Well, the deal was on that way. But it's not interesting. That is probably a couple of meetings ago, a couple of years ago, a couple of meetings ago. They were wanting to fly it for the taxpayer.
Remember, Richard, yeah, that was a couple of meetings ago, Corey Miller appeared online and, yeah, that's for, and you deferred any action on it at the time.
I have not been here in a meeting.
All right, thank you. Well, Brenda, can we do the post-election audit? It's not a public hearing.
Um, this is just, I need a motion to approve the post-election audit results. That was held on November fourteenth. Um, we audited the statewide races of constitutional amendment F and G. The official canvas totals were yes, four seventy-one, and no, two thirty, and this is on F. And the post-election audit was the same, yes, four seventy-one, no, two thirty. And then the second race audited was constitutional amendment G. Official canvas was yes, two nineteen, no, forty-seven. Post-election audit was also yes, two nineteen, forty-eighty-seven, a hundred percent accuracy.
Excellent. Need a motion to accept it.
Was a hand count or it wasn't a hand count, it was still the other side. I move to approve the election. Let's file the election.
Everything's been sealed, sealed up for twenty-two months.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Where's our highway dude?
John. Was he a drunk? Yep. See him. Do you want to get Jeff down and do some, uh?
John is here.
Yeah, I know, sorry, but he's down out the hallway. He's right there. Oh, there he is. Okay, sure, he is.
Your time, sir. Brenda, do it, due to the fact this is a bid opening, do we need to?
Yes, we have to wait.
Wait till eight-thirty? Okay, John, if you can start off with something else.
I sure can. Camera turned off. There we go. Thank you. All right, had a utility permit being submitted by Bubu Lecter, which is to put in a service drop across the Whitewood Valley Road. So right, service over to a, a piece of property that is owned by, well, John. This property does have, it is, lies in the arsenic boundary, so I did contact Home State and they did send an email which I have to accompany this. And they're fine with everything. They'll be in charge of making sure that the, uh, that the tailings are taken care of properly. So the, the landowner's aware of it as well as Home State. I have no problem with this drop as long as the bound, the bore pits are on the outer limits of the right of way. And the minimum of four foot of depth for the, because it's primary power, so I'd recommend approval.
I'm going to follow recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. We have this email.
Yeah. Motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
The, uh, I have a second utility permit. This is Black Hills Energy. They're, they want to put a secondary line drop across the Hillsview Road. This is near that intersection of Ridge Road. It's gonna, it's gonna service a piece of property that was planted out recently for a home site. So again, as long as the bore pits are at the outer limits of the right of way, and this is only has to be a thirty-six inch depth because of secondary power, I would, I would approve or recommend approval of this as well.
Looks like you gotta have a cover to cross two roads there, the main road and the secondary road. Is that true? It's just one?
Well, it's only our road. That's, it's going kind of a diagonal across our road. As far as the, uh, the Ridge Road there, that's, that's their, you know, that's a development road. You know, I don't really know for sure. There's a power box over here that they're gonna take, that's where they're gonna get the secondary power from, so. I mean, as far as we're concerned, it only crosses our road once. I'm going to follow recommendation for the permit.
One second.
Okay, we have motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Um, also I'm asking for permission to advertise for bid opening on December the seventeenth for our Nemo pavement project that we budgeted for, for twenty twenty-five. For three point six three miles of the Nemo Road, starting at Tomahawk Ranch, ended this year and proceeding northwest to the vicinity of Old Ridge Road. There is one section in there though, that we were gonna do some soil stabilization and some bank stabilization where the road runs right by the creek. And that is gonna have to be eliminated from this portion of the project because we did not get a four oh four permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. And by the time we get it, this project will be underway. So we're gonna bypass that section. Make the mileage up on the end and then proceed with that at a later date.
Okay. Motion to open?
Advertise for bidding.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
At eight-thirty, yeah.
Eight-thirty? Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Just keep developing the motion, will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And then I also, um, the last meeting, we talked about the purchases, our twenty-five equipment purchase for two pickup trucks. I did offer the, to local dealers to meet the state bid and the Whites Canyon Ford did uh, agree to meet the state bid and then also added on, uh, an eighteen, eighteen hundred and six dollar discount for fleet purchases for purchasing two, that's eighteen hundred and six per machine, so. He'll bring the final, uh, per cost bid of fifty-three thousand eight fifty-nine, which is under the, uh, state bid, so. I'd like to forego the bid process and a bid opening and just purchase off the state bid.
Both moved, allowed to, have department to purchase two trucks, state bid from a local dealer.
Second.
Okay, I have motion in a second, any further discussion? Same now, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And as Bruce said earlier, we did receive, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the resolution to the bid our Maitland Road Bridge over Falls Bottom Creek. I do have that here with the resolution number on it. I just asked that we need the chairman's signature on that and the auditor's signature on it.
Is that also for the big bridge, the big bridge?
That would be for the big bridge grant, that's right, an eighty-twenty grant. Everything on there would be, uh, what we've talked about in the past for that bridge. They just didn't get that to me in time to get it onto the agenda, so.
We need a motion.
I guess motion to approve the authorization and the chairman's signature.
Okay, I have motion in a second for chairman's signature. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's a regular bridge, it's a box culvert.
Uh, that's gonna be a box culvert. We already had the TSNL on that in our, our preliminary work that we've already paid for, and it will be a box culvert. But it'll still be under the big program, and it'll be an eighty-twenty match.
So both of those at Maitland, they'll be a large box culvert?
Correct.
Well, that should speak things up.
Good. We've got some pretty good interest, and we got a lot of gentlemen outside waiting to bid the Christianson Drive Bridge today, so. And I do have, I did put it on this, uh, this, uh, report, I put that, but since then, I got a list of the, the people from Bros that, that requested information on it. So they sent this with, with the engineer's estimate, if you guys would like, I made copies for everyone. You want to write down on these when we do the bid opening, pass them down. Let me save you from writing a bunch of names, gives you the engineer's estimate at the bottom as well. And I do think that the city of Spearfish is there to go over a plat, I guess we could do that here in the man.
Would you like to, uh, Jeremiah?
Um, I certainly can answer anything that you have.
Okay. Give a copy of the plat in your back commissioners. These are the ones that are in Shetland, takes them to the back of the lookout mountain, I think, in the city.
That's correct, yes.
This doesn't hook to any county road, it's, it's a development road, it's not in a road district. This plat has no impact on any county roads that, that I'm aware of, and I have no concerns with.
Motion approved?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to allow the highway superintendent to sign the document. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, thank you.
Um, just to report again, the bridge over Whitewood Creek was opened on Friday, that bridge is open. I did request from the state to send us as many bills as we can, we have, at this time, we've only paid our portion of seven hundred and some thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, I believe. I want to try to get as much of that paid for out of, out of, uh, this year's budget. We budgeted this year roughly two million dollars for that bridge, our portion. Um, just so it doesn't mess up our budget next year, I did, I did get the state to send us what they had. I got received another five hundred and fifty-nine million dollars, I believe, this morning of billing, so. It looks like we're gonna have a little outstanding on that over, you know, into next year, so hopefully, hopefully we can cover that, I guess, with what's in our budget, I don't know, we'll see, just depends on what bridges that we get done next year, but. We're gonna be a little short, it looks to me like we're gonna be short about seven hundred thousand of, you know, this year that we should be billed for, it'll grow over next year, but we'll see. I'm gonna try to get as much of it paid for as I can this year, but at least the bridge is open.
And you got the paving done on either side of it too?
They did, yeah, yeah, the, the state did a, a design mix change, uh, put an additive in there for cold weather paving, and it, it's nice, they did a very good job. Did the paving, it's very nice. So right now, um, they're just working on the reclamation, the removal of the, the bypass, they have to haul in some topsoil to cover the tailings in that area, again, because it's in the arsenic zone, so. And then when we're done with that, the county will go in and we'll be doing the fencing in that area, that's our, our obligation is to fence. So at least it's open.
How's the, uh, Salarity Project going on Home State?
Well, you'd know better than me, but.
Fence is still laid down.
I went out there the other day, and I mean, they're working on it. They're trying to get tidied up for winter is what they told me, but it looks like a mess out there to me, so.
I won't be able to put any livestock in that pasture if they don't fix that fence.
Well, I'll reach out to them and make sure they're aware that the fence needs to be taken care of before, before the snow gets too deep. You have plans to put livestock in there anytime soon? Okay, I'll make sure they're aware of that.
All right, thank you. So just to take a four minute break here, because we're gonna wait till eight thirty for the bid open. So if you want to power here, those, but I can wait.
Thanks.
They get stamped?
No, I just had a drumstick in there.
Chad, you had a lot of passion on this.
Well, that's the beauty of a box culvert, you know, when you do a box culvert, you get a lot more contractors that can do that. There's, bridges are pretty specialized, you don't, you know, there's just a handful of people that build bridges, but box culverts are a little, a little more readily available for contractors.
They gotta wait till eight thirty, the magic number dies, so.
I also have representative Bros here to, to go over these bids, so. He'll be, uh, reviewing them after we open them, so we can make a, a decision. This decision will also be contingent upon this, I'll go to DOT's approval.
You have another page there, I passed all mine by.
Oh, yeah, betcha.
Thank you.
Plenty. I don't know if anybody else wants?
Tab sheet?
Yeah.
You certainly.
You got one?
Yeah. Spread the love, but. John, were there any addendums?
No.
I put them in order, so hopefully. Put them on the list.
They are in order?
I think so. I tried.
They're in an order anyway, maybe not the same order.
John, do we have fifteen?
No, or some of them have been turned back, or here you are.
We have ten.
That's excellent.
Now you?
Should I scrub this?
Yeah.
All right. It is eight thirty, so time to jinx for the bid opening. After the paperwork here.
All right.
We don't have a job.
Uh, the first one we have is RCS.
Yeah, this is the time and the place set for a bid opening for the Christianson Drive Bridge, or play through the project forty-one, dash one three, dash one oh five.
You said RCS?
Correct. It does have the bid bond. And the total bid price is six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-eight cents.
One more time, please.
Six, seven, nine, two, six, zero, sixty-eight cents.
All right, thank you. Did you have an addendum?
No addendums. And you guys did see the engineer's estimate, correct?
Yes.
For those that don't have a sheet, the engineer's estimate is nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, our second bid is from AGE Corporation. It does have a bid bond. Total bid price is six hundred and five thousand, four hundred and ninety-three and zero cents, that's six, zero, five, four, nine, three, point, zero, zero. The third one is Hayworth Enterprises. It does have a bid bond. Total is five hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents. That's five, four, four, nine, nine, zero, point, six, zero. Next is North Star. It does accompany a bid bond. Total bid of five hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-five and no cents. That's five, one, zero, three, eight, five, point, zero, zero. Peterson Excavation is our next. It does have a bid bond. And it has a total of six hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine and zero cents, that's six, one, zero, three, eight, nine, point, zero, zero. Our next one is Zanster Construction. Does have a bid bond. And the total is seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and five point, six, zero. That's seven, three, two, nine, zero, five, point, six, zero. That's seven, three, two, nine, zero, five point six, zero. Core Construction is our next one. It does accompany the bid bond. And it is a seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven, twenty-one point zero, zero. At seven, five, four, seven, two, one point zero, zero. Rand Guard is our next bidder. It does have a bid bond. And it does have the total of six hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-one cents. At six, one, eight, four, one, eight point two, one. Getting close to the bottom here. Uh, our next bidder is Ainsworth Benning. Does have a bid bond. Has a total of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents. That's four, six, five, seven, one, five point two, five. And the last one we have is RCI. Rogers, correct. It does have a bid bond. And the total price is six hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. That's six, six, two, six, nine, or nine, six, nine point six, eight. Yes, I'd like to, uh, to, uh, have our consultant inspect these, review them a little bit before we make a decision.
Okay, thank you, Aaron Williams, for listening. Appreciate it.
I'll let you know. That was, I have no other business.
Yeah, it was cool.
It's quite a contrast.
Yeah, they're all over the place, aren't they? We'll see how that goes.
The mic has been muted. Bruce, the mic has been muted. We, no one on the call can hear what you're saying.
Go back on, I just turned the mic off while we're on break.
Thank you.
Come on up, sir.
Brandon's on you.
Soon as Brandon returns, we'll continue.
How are you? Good.
How are you, sir?
How you doing?
No, I'm done. I don't want to do no more. Glad I'm out of these. Amy's going in. For one. December.
It's hard on your knees up there.
Apparently.
Too many stairs.
I guess so, we just can't, we can't handle it. December fifth. Yeah.
That's what, six weeks out?
Yeah.
Sure, a long six weeks, too.
It gets to be long. Get kind of antsy there.
I'm hoping for two weeks.
All right, good morning. Um, I've just got a few, uh, interim reviews to take care of. So we'll be done for the end of the year. First one is, uh, for CUP three twenty-nine, second residence for Sydney, Arnie O'Gillis. He's had this for a long time. Uh, no changes since last, last year, and, uh, we will do another review in twelve months. Uh, next one is for three sixty-two. This is Charlie Brown, uh, Two End Energy Systems. Um, he had two windmills up there and he took them down and, uh, we just need to cancel those CUPs. It's no longer needed, so. Yes, we do.
Second.
Next one is, uh, four forty-three is for Robin Hour. They had a shredder house, uh, put on another, uh, parcel land on Creek City Road. That has been removed. And, uh, so it is no longer needed, so we may need a motion to cancel that CUP as well.
So move.
All right, we have a motion in a second to cancel.
Uh, next one is, uh, four fifty-nine for some kennels. Uh, conditions used, has been used as intended. You've had no complaints in the past twelve months. All conditions being followed. So we asked, um, since this is, uh, second year for this one, we are asking that that be put on as needed basis.
Second.
Uh, this one is, uh, three sixty for Lee Eddie. This is also, this, uh, is also the second year for this one. Condition used being used as intended. No complaints. Uh, we're asking that this be put on as needed basis as well.
So move.
Can't wait, motion in a second. To, uh, I second it, sorry. Getting out of myself. Is on an as needed basis. Follows a favor with motion, say aye.
Next two kind of go together. They do go together. Uh, this is CUP four sixty-seven, Mike Kenderzinski from Campground, up off of Mattson Lane. This is, uh, actually the third year for this one. Uh, no complaints. All the condition being, we're asking that that be put on an as needed basis.
So move.
Okay, we have motion in a second for approval. Follows a favor with motion, say aye.
And along with that one is CP four sixty-eight for this, Mike Kenderzinski for trail rides and horse boarding up there. He's been doing that, for more than three years now. Uh, again, no problems, no, conditions are all being met. We're asking to be put on an as needed basis.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have motion in a second for approval of that. Follows a favor with motion, say aye.
Next one is, uh, four seventy-nine. This is for David and Patricia Johnson. This is, for the, uh, Johnson Lane. Building permit has been issued for, the septic is complete, just for a second residence. Septic is complete, site is ready to go, mobile home or permanent cabin is scheduled to be put on for next summer. The caretaker that will be using it, the second residence finishing up school out of state in Oklahoma. Um, so we're asking that, um, if we can get a, an extension for them to give another year to get that set up and going.
Another year?
So move it, give him a second. So move, we give him an extension.
And we have a motion in a second to, uh, give another year extension. Follows a favor with the motion, say aye.
Okay, last one I have is for CP forty-one. This is, uh, the Shacks at Deadwood, up off of, uh, Mattson Lane as well, Majestic Heights. They have one cabin is nearly complete, should be ready for a final year any time. And work is ready to begin on the other cabins up there, so we just recommend that, uh, another review be done in twelve months. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything else we can do.
So we can stand by until public hearing at nine?
Yeah, or at eight until nine a.m.
Mr. Chairman, now, ten o'clock, I've been having a matter regarding assignment of funds. You can handle now.
All right, we'll come back to order and take care of that item.
Please focus, but they're back in session, so they do.
Go ahead, Brendan.
Brady, um, just a, a quick review. This is on the Public Safety and Services Center project. Um, so, um, as you have known from the auditor's account with the treasurer, the, um, US bank bond funds are nearly depleted. We have about one point five million left of those funds, and so once those are gone, um, back in July twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-two, we assigned five million dollars, um, to the project. And we also designated the interest that was earned, um, we put that in the Collier's, um, security, uh, securities. And of that five million dollars, we earned four hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents of interest. So that was very, uh, good. So, um, we have moved those funds back into the County General Fund. And, um, I would need, if you guys approve, to a motion for me to use that five million dollars plus interest, the four seventy-six, two eleven seventy-five, assigned to the Public Safety and Services Center, um, on July twenty-sixth. So I need a motion to allow me to use those assignment of funds, because we assigned those specifically for that project. And then if you, if you want to make a motion to approve that, then also I need to transfer those funds from the general fund into the Public Safety and Services Center Fund.
Can we do it?
Um, you can.
Okay, we have motion in a second. Follow Brandon's recommendation on the funds. Any further discussion? Saying none, all listen favor with the motion, say aye.
All right.
Moved over and.
Kudos to our, uh, red treasurer probably for finding that spot to put that money to gain that much interest.
Yeah, that was excellent.
Million dollar interest, yeah.
We're back in for another four minutes.
All right, well, after reviewing all of these and going through them, um,
the engineer and I concur that Ainsworth Benning is the lowest responsible bidder and that they meet all the requirements. So we would recommend Ainsworth be awarded the bid contingent upon the Southwood D O T's approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you.
Can I? Bros would like to take these and scan them. And then we'll get them back.
And then make sure they, so they get everything that they need.
Correct.
Perfect. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
We're getting close to the aye. Okay, it is nine a.m. Time and place for a public hearing. Conditions permit four ninety-four. Applekins, David, you're going to walk us through this, Bruce?
Looking my best. I, I don't see David here. You do have a copy of the staff report, which I think is on the plan, or no matter what, recently presented the plan in the zoning. Uh, they made a recommendation of approval five to zero. As you can see, the application is for a church building just outside of Deadwood here. Draft conditions were presented to plan in the zoning. You'll see in the staff report where um, modifications were made to the proposed conditions. I think those reflected on page two of the staff report.
Okay. This is public hearing. So if there's anyone in the body of the audience or on the internet that would like to speak for or against this at this time, we would ask that you would please stand, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the body of the audience that would like to speak to this? Or online?
I don't know if we've heard what the issue is. We have people just coming in.
It's not what you're. It's not the reason you're hearing this.
We'd still like to know what's going on.
Well, Bruce, Bruce just explained it.
Think we're good.
Okay, one more time. Anyone that would like to speak for or against this? Not seen. We'll close the public hearing. And offer to more.
Does anybody know whether uh, he uh, asked to have an annex into the city of Deadwood?
I don't know that that conversation came up. Uh, I don't think anybody asked. I suspect the answer is not. I don't know that it's contiguous to be able to do that.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion of some kind here.
I'm moving to approve the initial use permit.
Oh, second, four ninety-four.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of this condition of use permit. Number four ninety-four. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Probably better.
Okay, troops, we gotta wait till eight fifteen.
See, um, Mr. Chairman, Eric Mises here, uh, maybe others. You can talk about the school policy if you wanted to get into that. Um, I don't know how long that conversation is going to go. Yeah, it's nine forty-five. Uh, we could talk about the professional services for the community for nine thirty-five as well. Want to do that?
That list. Try to catch a little bit of that.
Mr. Chairman, uh, first year consideration is a letter attached just regarding lot one thirty-six of Paradise Acres. Outstanding was the fire mitigation work. There was a bond posted for that. Mr. Maddox has presented a letter saying that the work has been completed to his satisfaction. And so a request would be to release the bond for that work as it's completed. I think the amount was two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Just to make one partner's line. Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to release the bond. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Standby for a second. We also have the agreement for November here for Tom Paisley for the twenty twenty-five agreement for co-review. And I think what Tom has done is when needed, has renewed commercial type plans. He has definitely been able to do that. I think in the past year, I think maybe planning zoning used in once or twice. But uh, it's time to renew his agreement with the opposition to have a chairman sign that as well.
Okay, what's your pleasure on that? I assume it was beneficial?
Yes. When needed.
I said, um, I'm moving away. Continue to do that.
Okay. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to the agreement with Mr. Paisley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Mr. Chairman, next for consideration is it's a matter of the letter of credit for PH Development. As I understand it, the current letter of credit was set to expire in December. The work has yet to be complete, so this is an extension of that letter of credit to complete the work that's to be done yet. And the amount of, of the work yet to be done is reflected on the first page. It's eight hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. It has reflected in the engineer's estimate of the work remaining to be done. Just a color health thing. Or the other one? This is the other one. Must be color health, right? Well, I'm sorry, yeah, it is. Yeah, I'm sorry. That action. To authorize, um, so there's, there's an amended M O U in here as well. Um, to authorize the chairman to sign the amended M O U.
Make a motion to accept the extension and allow the chairman to sign it. But they don't have a random.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
And then similarly is the matter of the third credit regarding Spearfish Mountain Ranch. The bond began as set to expire sometime in December, so this is effectively an extension of that. The end is an engineer's estimate of the work remaining to be done. Eighty totals. One of the uh, out of credits, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. That represents also fifty percent contingency. Uh, there is an amended M O U. We'll be looking for authorization as the chairman to sign amended M O U.
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval for signature. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Thanks to Amy for signing his own, we get organized. Appreciate that. And I think that concludes all of it. He is. He's on the hall then. Um, I don't know if you're going to be able to get that done at W. At this point, he did see, uh, I'll wait.
Okay, and we're back in so-called recess until nine fifteen. Everyone, we're going to get started on this ordinance. Which will be the second reading. We did advertise and have the opportunity for the public, everyone to come before the planning of zoning a couple of months ago. And we've given an ample opportunity to get out and voice your opinion for or against. And we've done the same on November twelfth. We had another public hearing over in the city of Deadwood, Chivers. And gave everyone as much time as they felt necessary to speak their piece. So we've given everybody an opportunity. And we did close the public hearing over there, so today there was absolutely no public comment. This is just for the the board members here to discuss this and uh, decide what we want to do. So I would ask that you all be patient with us and and uh, allow us the time to uh, have the discussion and go from there. So I thank you. Thank you all for coming. Bruce says we form.
Jesus, any latecomers?
I think the latecomers can't fit in anyway, so.
Yeah. And this is the second reading. And the day that we will make a decision on this. So just Bruce gives me the door.
Stand by.
Good chance.
Keep standing. Here we go.
Okay, and this is time and place for the second reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero five. Zoning order adjustment conditions permit. Is the topic?
Aye.
Mm-hmm.
Carol, please, please meet yourself.
Nine forty-five.
Carol, this is Bruce. Can you meet yourself, please?
We've got a half hour.
Click on her mic.
There we go.
Is it done?
There, she made it. Okay, sorry.
All right, would any gentleman like to start this, or? I've got comments and I want to make, but uh, someone else wants to begin. Mr. Jennings?
Yeah, I can sure do that. Been thinking about this quite a little, obviously, for, for several months. What I was thinking about yesterday is, as county commissioners, we are given the responsibility of casting votes for what is best for the entire county. I believe that we all take this very seriously and research and consider all sides of an issue and the possible consequences of our decision. While considering ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-four oh five, I was bothered that its passage would take away from the opportunity for referring a conditional use permit decision to a public vote. But it's more concerning to me that our current referral system is, is giving not just neighboring landowners, but all the voting citizens of the county the opportunity to dictate how a private landowner may use his or her land. I'm always going to support private property rights. But I also feel that we need limitations on property use so that neighboring landowners are not adversely affected by an individual's land use. That is the purpose of zoning. The zoning ordinance that we have in Lawrence County provides landowners with expectations of what uses the zoning districts can be used for, both approved uses and conditional uses. The conditional use permitting process allows the county to examine the appropriateness of a CUP application, and if approved, attach conditions to the CUP to mitigate the effects outside of their property boundaries. While not a perfect system, I feel it is a successful system when looking at the small number of complaints the county has received on the almost five hundred CUPs in the county. This ordinance revision is not initiated or was not initiated to address a particular CUP application. It was initiated to incorporate changes made in the twenty twenty, like South Florida Legislative Session with Senate Bill one fifty-seven. That bill, which was passed and signed into law, was incorporated into several other statutes. While this has made it challenging to interpret the statute, it doesn't change the intent to. of the bill. I feel that following the intent of Senate Bill one fifty-seven, following our obligation to uphold the laws of South Dakota and doing what is best for the entire county, has led me to support adopting twenty-two four oh five.
Okay, at this time, Bruce, do you want to weigh in on some of the legality?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so my recommendation would be that you do approve the ordinance as submitted, and I would offer that the changes merely bring Lawrence County ordinances into compliance with state law, and this is to avoid a potential legal challenge to the existing procedure. And if I can give just a brief explanation support of that, if I may, this isn't meant to be exhaustive, but just to give some indication of why I settle on that. We know from state law that county commission only has the power, it's granted, the authority granted to them by the legislature. And so with that in mind, when we look at the statutes, I guess we'd ask the question, how are how are CUPs to be approved? And so we would expect if the county commission, acting as the county commission, can approve CUPs, we would look for language from the legislature that allows for that. And so what is an example of what that link would look like, for example? I just picked one out from, and this is chapter seven dash eighteen, and this is the chapter dealing with the corporate powers and obligations of counties. And so, for example, I'm just paraphrasing, any board of county commissioners may obtain and pay for all forms of liability insurance. So that's the kind of language that we would expect to see somewhere that authorizes the county commission, acting as county commission, to approve CUPs. Does that make sense? And while we're in seven eight, chapter seven eighteen, that looks like probably a good place to maybe look for the delegation of this power. And I guess I don't I don't see it anywhere in that set of statutes. Similarly, if we go to chapter seven dash eight, and that's the chapter dealing with, if you can find it.
I can't help you look for it.
Yeah, stand by. There's another chapter dealing with powers of the county commissioners as well. And if we look at that set of statutes, I don't see anything in there that that authorizes the county commission, acting as the county commission, to approve CUPs. However, we get to logically, then, we get to chapter eleven dash two, and that's the chapter and statute dealing with county commissioners and planning and zoning. And so I guess we're not surprised that we do see references as to how CUPs are to be approved by the county. If that makes sense to everybody so far. We see in eleven-two forty-nine, for example, that the county commission shall provide for the board of adjustment. So that's pretty clear that the county commission needs to have a board of adjustment. We also see in eleven-two dash fifty-three subsection three that the board of adjustment is authorized to hear and determine uses authorized by the conditional uses, excuse me, conditional uses, as authorized by the zoning ordinance. And we also see in eleven-two sixty that the county commissioners may act as the board of adjustment. So what I see there is a clear indication that the county commission acting as the board of adjustment can approve CUPs. What I don't see anywhere in the statute is where a county commission acting as the county commission can approve CUPs. Does that make sense to everybody? And so that's one of the, well, that's the research that I've done, and it's partial support for my recommendation that you approve it. I don't see, and I try to carefully read all the letters that you received. You received a lot of letters, and I didn't see anybody addressing that issue. And so I should add, if I may, since this morning, since you've started, you have received several other letters in opposition. I've been trying to diligently provide you with all of those, and they're hopefully posted on the website. There were some that have come in this morning that you don't have. I can take the time to read those.
Sure.
So Mr. Sheehan reports, I am a tax, a paying, tax-paying citizen of Lawrence County who strongly opposes this rule, make no mistake. If this gets implemented, the citizens will use their own funds to sue, to have the rule block reversed, and then make sure this entire board is removed from their positions as soon as possible. This is way over the line. Angie Gross, she opposes, she opposes adoption. She says vote no. Les Wolf says, I oppose twenty-four oh five. I'm a firm believer in the voice of the people being recognized regardless of the body and power creating the situation, and he thanks you. Sean Zieg, Zieglemeyer, as a resident and community-minded person, I am writing in opposition to twenty-four, he says oh six, I think it's oh five. Our rights to petition should be just that, the right to petition. Thank you for the platform to express my right. And finally, no, I guess that's it as well.
Okay, I've, all of this has become part of the record, and I personally have a lot of people come forward and see me personally that are in favor of this. We've got, we've got, we have a substantial amount of ag property in our community, and there's a lot of allowed uses on ag property. And these people feel that they're getting their rights taken away. I mean, they, some of these ranches have been here well over a hundred years, run by several generations of family, and they have rights as well as everybody else. And so we need to treat everybody fairly here. It's, and I'm, as Commissioner Jennings said, I do support personal property rights. So. Well, anyone else want to add anything into this at this time? Commissioner Sleep?
Yeah, I'll have to say that I was at the public hearing last month there, and there was more for it than against it. Most of those for it were mining people, and the mining industry has been very vocal and very great in all of its doings in Lawrence County and that. So I could see why they supported it, and everyone that wanted to talk was given a chance to speak, and I guess I did that. So I, I'm for doing this.
And this can be another thought process as well. Our community wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the mining and the timber industry and the ag industry. I mean, this, the ag industry produces our food. I don't want to wake up some morning and have someone that has moved in next to ag property get upset over maybe me possibly having cattle in there. They don't want them close to my property line because they don't like the smell. I mean, I can see this continuing down the road to where more and more rights are going to get taken away from the people that have supported and worked in this community forever. Anyone else?
I'm just comfortable following the law, and that's what Bruce has laid out for us, and he's done that before.
No, we need, we need.
I had a real heartburn over the last referendum vote because I think they ought to be done either on primary day or on general election day so the whole county can vote or does vote. They're all able to, but normally the only ones that show up for a referendum are the ones that are upset about that, whatever. So.
We didn't have a pretty good showing for a lot of people in the community.
Mr. Chairman? I could add too, I haven't arrived at this conclusion solely on my own. I did reach out to the government practices hotline through our insurance, and I talked to a lawyer who has years of experience dealing with government-related issues like this, and I consulted with him, I have on a number of occasions about this issue, and I think he agrees with the recommendation that the change is necessary.
All right, I would entertain further discussion or emotion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go ahead with this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I rise to a point of order. Lynn Levin Good, one oh three oh five, Home State.
Sir, sir, we have, this is not a public hearing.
I understand. It's a point of, it's emerging a point of order.
All right, make it brief.
When the impairment of a constitutional right affecting Lawrence County voters is at issue, it's imperative on each commissioner to exercise due diligence to ascertain whether the action, here twenty-four oh five, is legally required by South Dakota statute. Attorney Akas told me that no commissioner has asked him to ask the South Dakota Attorney General simply whether yes or no, the passage of ordinance twenty-four dash oh five is legally required by statute to bring Lawrence County ordinances into compliance with state law. You should so inquire before taking any further action on this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order is used if parliamentary procedure is not being followed, and I'm not hearing anything about parliamentary.
No, all you're doing is offering your opinion, sir, so I want you to stop right there. Thank you. All right, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion from the board? Hearing none, Brenda, would you please do a roll call? All of us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye, again.
Aye, Stru. Aye.
Fizdo.
Aye.
Sleep?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh.
Okay, see you there in a smoke.
All right. Mr. Chairman, just before moving on, I would like to thank everybody that sent in letters. I read every one of them at least once, many of them more than once, and they certainly helped me form my opinion. So I appreciate everybody's interest.
Okay. See what we have left to clean up here. We've done all Andrews, huh, Bruce? We have recessed a couple minutes. We are next.
Carolyn, Ralph, everybody, if you have anything. Hold up, sir. Oh, yes, I'll go back in line. And so Eric, I don't know if you know, yesterday afternoon, about four o'clock, county commissioners received a letter from Mr. Coleman. He says that he, so he is the, I guess, the builder of trying to build the home. He said he was unable to attend the meeting today. He indicates he received a letter from his attorney, and I guess from Eric, authorizing them to move forward. And so that's what I know at this point. So I would defer to Eric.
Thank you. Everybody. Eric, Eric Neese, six twenty-eight, Bridgewater, am I right? Yeah, Bridgewater, Water, in Spearfish. I just moved. So I represent SCOAA, Spearfish Canyon Owners Association. We may have some of the members on line. So just to give a little bit of background, the, we're in front of you because gentleman wanted to build, there was a little disagreement about how the covenants were interpreted. That has been resolved. It was resolved eternally. He's been granted permission to move forward. But as a result of that, a longstanding, I'm going to say procedure of the county was kind of brought in front of everybody, and that's, I think, why we're here today. So just, and I wasn't aware of a lot of this myself, but just to give everybody a little bit of background, for those of you like me who weren't around at the time, back in nineteen ninety-six, something similar happened. There was a disagreement between a landowner in the canyon and the HOA on certain interpretation of covenants, and it transpired that this gentleman just went over the head of the HOA and got the approval for the building permit. And it turned out that he was in the wrong that time. I'm not going to take a position on this time, but that back then in nineteen ninety-six, he was in the wrong, and it led to a discussion between SCOAA and the Planning Commission on if there shouldn't be some arrangement for building permits in the canyon. And it came in front of the P and Z Commission on September fifth, nineteen ninety-six, and I've got the minutes here. And there was a long discussion on if there couldn't be some type of arrangement to avoid problems like this in the future. And at the time, it was clearly admitted that it's two different sovereigns here. The county has its rules that are enforced, and the HOA has its covenants. And I just, I'd like to read you just a little quick of things that were talked about by Jerry Baldwin and others. It was stated that they would like to discuss possible changes on a broader scale so this would not occur again and help protect the area. And this is the granting of a building permit that was in, that actually breached the covenants. In his opinion, Spearfish Canyon is not a development, is a major part of the county with two hundred living units and a special, and is a special and sensitive area. Baldwin stated that at the present, there are two sets of regulations, and the county should not be expected to regulate the homeowner's regulations. But on the other hand, the county should not expect the HOA to regulate the entire canyon. So they sought a few things. One, tighten loopholes regarding building permits, and the fact that the homeowner can obtain a building permit from the county without first obtaining permission from the ARC, and establish guidelines which all can function without adding excess burden to the county. So that was, that was, and I said, that's from the minutes back in nineteen ninety-six. So based on that, it was decided, and I think it's always just been a handshake, I don't think there's anything formal here, that the, the county wouldn't grant a building permit unless SCOAA had approval. And that, again, that's just been for almost thirty years, how things have gone. And as a result of this current kerfuffle that's been brought in front of the, of the commission. On behalf of SCOAA, I ask the commission to leave the status quo where it is. We believe this is working. We believe that given the fact there's not a lot of building permits in the county, in the canyon, but when there are, they're important, given the fact that the canyon's twenty miles long and about a couple hundred feet wide, this is a unique situation, given the fact that there is a federal scenic byway driving through the middle of it, all of these, the board of directors would ask the commission to keep on where it is. We understand we can't demand it. We understand that's not, that's not why we're here, and we understand that the commission represents the entire county. But for this specific situation, we believe this arrangement has worked to save everybody time, cost, and inconvenience. So that's just in the background is why I'm here and what I've been asked to communicate.
Okay, Bruce?
I think Eric is right. I shouldn't have interjected this before. There was some indication that commissioners wanted to talk about whether or not you're going to continue with that policy. And so that's why it's on the agenda part as well.
Is there anyone on the end that, from SCOAA that would care to speak at this time?
I see Carolyn and Ralph were on earlier. I don't see them in the picture.
And there Cindy Knapp, who is the president, was going to be on, but she emailed me this this morning and indicated she had a, she would do her best to be here, but she may not be here.
Okay, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
Oh, I got plenty, but I thought, I wanted to answer questions more than anything else. Again, I understand the issue, and we aren't blind to the fact that this is not what most HOAs have. And I'm sure some people would say, well, it's not fair, it's not the county's job to police covenants, and I understand that. Again, however, I think this is a unique situation. It's a unique HOA for the county. And I believe the reasons that this procedure was put in place more than thirty years ago are not only still in place, I think there are more. I think with the growth of the county, I think it's important that everybody work together to make sure the canyon stays as pristine as it can. And that's, that's the essence. That's the essence of these covenants. And we're not asking that the commission or P&amp;Z do SCOAA's work for it. We've got a very active ARC. They do a good job. All we're trying to make sure is that somebody doesn't try to jump over the ARC's head, get permission to build something that otherwise wouldn't be allowed, and put both the county and the HOA in kind of a difficult position.
Okay. Commissioner says that.
And Eric, my position hasn't changed since 1996. I'm still against it. At the time, I lived in the mountain plains, and I felt that the mountain plains was just as in need of protection as the canyon and just as serene and beautiful as a canyon. And I think if we're going to do that for homeowners association, we should be open to doing it for all, which would be ridiculous for planning and zoning and for the county commissioners. So I've been opposed to it, and I still am. Just the way it is.
See Carolyn and Ralph during the screening. Carolyn, Ralph, would you like to speak at this time?
Did you mute them still, Bruce?
I think they're not muted.
There they go.
No, we have an attorney there that's doing our work for us.
Right, I just wanted to offer, thank you. Anyone else? Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm with Commissioner Tisdale. I think that the county's authority should not go any further than what is required by state statute. And I don't think that being involved in homeowners association affairs is the place for the county.
Okay. I mean, it is, I guess I look at it, and it is a fairness issue because we do it for one and not all of them. Obviously, it would... I don't know that we would have the time and energy and resources to do it for all homeowners associations. It would complicate things a lot. Do we want to think about this for a while longer, guys?
I think ready for a motion. So I'm sure with the motion. So I would move that we discontinue the policy that the Planning and Zoning Office approve any building permits within Spearfish Canyon homeowners association boundaries that does not carry the ARC approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay.
Is that all we've got to do in zoning?
Yes, I think so.
All right, we are down to items from the public. And we do limit our discussion time on this because obviously something that wants to come up to address the boredom of an issue that hasn't been publicized. So there's no decisions made, but we will allow persons to stand up, state your name and your address for the record, and let us know what's on your mind. And we try to limit that to three minutes. Is there anyone in the room that would like to address the board today? Mr. Chairman? One online.
I was going to point out last night, there was an email that was concerned that the county was divided by state law. It was a legal violation for not having time for the public on the agenda. And so it cited the statutes 1-27. I can't remember the subsection, but that's precisely what this item at 10:15 is meant to do.
And we've had it on there forever.
Since the launch, yes. So, and I did bother to respond and point out that there is that opportunity on the agenda, and that it is intended to comply with statute.
Well, that's where we're at right now. Again, is there anyone online or in the audience that would like to address the board at this time who had public comments? I don't see anything. So we'll close that. Is there anyone on the board that would like to add anything for the benefit of this meeting today? We don't see anything. You're getting motion to the jerk.
We're moving.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. No, 17, he's getting tired. He's all signed up. Whether we're over here.
End of recording, I'm hoping.